All set, sir.
Good afternoon. I'm now going to call the Wednesday, December twentieth, two thousand and twenty-three meeting of the Norfolk County Commissions to order. On Wednesday, March twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-three, Governor Haley signed into law Chapter Two of the Acts of two thousand and twenty-three, making appropriations for fiscal year of two thousand and twenty-three, which includes a two-year extension of the option for public parties to hold remote meetings by suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, as general in Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty. That action was effective immediately, extending the current option for remote meetings through March thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five. You'll all join me standing in full in the floor.
Politicians to the left, on the United States of America, in two republics for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Call roll. Commissioner Stady.
I'm present, sir.
Commissioner Collins.
Present.
Commissioner Shays, present. We have a corner. We're going to open the meeting, do a few housekeeping measures early on, and at one-thirty, we're going to break for a public hearing on a matter in the town of Stoughton, and then go back to the regular agenda. Number three, Minnesota Open Session Meeting of December thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three for approval.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of the many meeting minutes presented.
Second.
Motion made in second, all fair.
Aye.
It is a vote. Thank you. We have no appointments. Number five, public comment. Each week we have a session on our agenda for public comment from anyone present or anyone out in Zoom land that has any comment. Director Cronin, have you heard from anyone?
No, sir.
Anyone out in high called Zoom landed, uh, has any public comment today? Last call for public comment. That concludes public comment. Oh, business I have none. Personal matters for consideration. We have none. Payroll expense warrants for approval. Commissioner Stady.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Uh, through you, I move approval of the following warrant list for twelve twenty-two-three. Item number one, twenty-four dash twenty-four payroll to county, new approval of one hundred fifty-one thousand, six hundred seventy-two dollars, sixty-nine cents. So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second, all fair.
Aye.
It is a vote next.
Second item, twelve dash all three dash twenty-four, expense of the county, new approval of five hundred seventy-four thousand, eight hundred one dollars, fifty-two cents. So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second, all in favor.
Aye.
It is a vote next.
Third, we have two for the school. Twenty-four dash oh-six-A, expense for the school, amount of one thousand eight hundred eighty-six dollars, ninety-nine cents. So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second, all in favor. Aye, it is a vote.
Next, twenty-four dash oh-six-B, expense for the school, move the approval of ninety-five thousand, two hundred eleven dollars, sixty-seven cents. So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second, all in favor. Aye, it is a vote.
And, Mr. Chairman, the last two are opera, uh, uh, related issues. First one is twenty-four dash twenty-four, move the opera approval of the town of Medfield for the amount of fifty thousand, three hundred thirty-six dollars, twenty-five cents. So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second, all in favor.
Aye.
It is a vote.
The last item, twenty-four dash twenty-four opera for the county of Norfolk, move approval of the sum of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second, all in favor.
Aye.
That concludes our warrant for twelve twenty, Mr. Chairman.
Number nine and ten, we're going to put together. Nine is report on the American Rescue Plan Act of two thousand and twenty-one, and then specifically the opera warrants that we just approved. Commissioner, Director Cronin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, just to add some depth to the, uh, words that Commissioner Stady just read to you. Um, one of them includes the county of Norfolk, as mentioned, this particular project funds, uh, proposed, uh, restroom, Wollson recreational facility. Um, this particular item falls under supporting public health, um, to, as I mentioned, fund a new prefabricated structure on the fifteen pole, I believe it is. Um, it will promote a sanitary and healthy environment. Um, and as the only other restroom is clubhouse, um, uh, definitely help offset the spread of COVID nineteen. So this particular item, which I know our engineering department has worked closely with, the superintendent on will be a nice asset for, um, golf course, uh, that was thing one. The second item was related to the town of Medfield. Uh, this was fifty thousand, three hundred and thirty-six dollar award. Um, this also was an advance under revenue replacement, um, to allow the town to place a certain piece of equipment used, uh, for municipal buildings and facilities. This is revenue replacement falls under facilities, vehicle advancement, um, purchase. That is my report on opera this week. Um, by the first week in January, I'll have a letter, uh, drafted for the commissioners to view relative to directing each of the communities in Norfolk County, how they will plan to close out their opera allotment, uh, before the end of two thousand and twenty-four, um, the obligation period ends. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any questions?
Real quick.
Commissioner.
Uh, through you, of course, to our director, is there a timeline on how far back you can go for revenue replacement, like for that piece of equipment?
Yes.
That, how far back can you go?
March of two thousand and twenty.
Okay, so within that. Right, okay, okay. Thank you. All set, Mr. Chairman?
This concludes any discussion or outcome in today's meeting. Pit openings, we have none. Contractual awards, we have none. Number thirteen, Norfolk County Commission's quarterly meeting notice for calendar year two thousand and twenty-four.
Commissioners, as you know, under Chapter thirty-four, section nine, the county commission is required to meet four times a year. These are called your quarterly meetings, um, pursuant to our manager of administration and budget direction, Phil, Phil Iantoska. Um, these meetings will happen on the third Tuesday of April, the fourth Tuesday of June, in September, and the last Wednesday of December. Second please.
Any discussion? Of course, we meet mostly every week anyways.
I believe the vote, the board has voted already to postpone the Tuesday quarterly meetings to the following Wednesday. This afternoon, we're looking for your relief on the, I'm sorry, the motion to move the twelve twenty-seven meeting because you're not meeting next week until January third. Uh, furthermore, I will announce that your proposed meeting schedule for next year includes a meeting date of Christmas Day, uh, December twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-four. Uh, before that day arrives, we will have some feedback from county, town council on how to, um, navigate around it. Probably submit a prior week and call it a meeting that fits that notice. So today, we just need a motion to postpone the twelve twenty-seven meeting to one for two thousand and twenty-four.
So moved. But we meet every week. Which is crazy. That's saying according to statute, you're only required to meet four times a year. We meet every week.
That's correct. Generally, I would maybe, I bet we meet fifty-one, fifty weeks a year.
Next week, we're not going to be. But I'm saying, my point is, President, you always say we meet every week.
The notice is, um, uh, minimal, uh, standard.
Minimal standard, okay.
But because it's quite clear, we have to post the meeting on those days, and, um, when you don't make a notice that you don't get.
All right, but what about the Tuesday versus Wednesday?
We post, we meet Tuesdays.
You can make it whatever day.
Because we can't, they need it, right? So the motion, the motion to move the twelve twenty-seven meeting to one-four will clarify that obligation for calendar year twenty-three.
Okay.
And then I need a second motion to approve the, um, requested quarterly meetings for twenty, for two, two thousand and twenty-four.
Okay, so you're going to make this motion here, this one? All right, send to the record as a motion?
Yes.
At the same time? Do you have that? I have this right here.
You see?
This is right here, mister.
Thank you.
So wait.
Yes, if you'd like, you can read the public announcement, um, and the dates. That'll be sufficient. That's for two thousand and twenty-four. We also need a motion to move twelve twenty-seven to one-three.
Okay, first, uh, I move that, um, in accordance with the Mass General Act, Chapter thirty-four, Section nine, the county commissioners shall meet in their office, uh, at six fourteen High Street for transactional county business during the county year two thousand and twenty-four, uh, as follows. December, April sixteenth at one, Wednesday, we'll say seventeenth at one, Tuesday, June twenty-fifth at one, Wednesday, June twenty-sixth at one, Tuesday, September twenty-fourth at one, Wednesday, September twenty-fifth at one, Wednesday, December twenty-fifth, God help us, at one. As ordered here, hearing for the described, so moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Motion made in second, all in favor.
Aye.
I'm struggling to get ready.
The next motion.
Right, to one-thirty. Another motion.
Yeah, move, let me take the, uh, the meeting of next week, twelve twenty, twelve twenty-seven, and move that to January third, two thousand and twenty.
It's January third.
I let you give a word for it, they said, third. Three, four, and then third, third. One, three, twenty-four. So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Motion made in second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. All right.
One-thirty.
Did you hear that?
I guess we're safe.
No.
Commissioners, I'm going to entertain a motion to recess this meeting for the purposes of holding a public hearing on a piece of property in the town of Stoughton. If you take a motion to recess, then we will return after the public hearing to complete a regular agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second to recess this regular meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you. I think it's one-thirty. I can tell it's one-thirty hours here.
It says to one-twenty-nine, check. Not to be dangerous. Is it one-thirty? It is one-thirty. All right.
That, amazing.
I'm going to entertain a motion now to open a public hearing on a petition of the town of Stoughton acting through its select board to alter a portion of Page Street, Stoughton, Mass. This is on the recent.
I've moved, uh, that we, uh,
To open a public.
Open a public hearing
Mm-hmm.
on the petition of the town of Stoughton regarding the alteration by discontinuance of a portion of Page Street, October twenty-two, eighteen seventy-two, county layout. The petition of discontinuous plan are available for viewing by appointment at Norfolk County Engineering Department on six forty-nine High Street, that amounts or online, as so described.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm Joseph Shay, the chairman of the Norfolk County Commissions, and chair this public hearing on the petition of the town of Stoughton to alter a portion of Page Street in Stoughton, Mass, dated February ninth, two thousand and twenty-two, as shown on a plan dated February second, two thousand and twenty-two, prepared by Curly and Hanson surveyors and sealed by William Self, PLS. Scale one inch is thirty feet. I'm now going to call on the county surveyor Patrick Hughes to read the Higgins, Patrick Higgins, to read the petition.
Any questions?
Good afternoon.
To the honorable county commissioners of the county of Norfolk, respectfully represent your petitioners, being the town of Stoughton acting through its select board inside county, that common convenience and necessity require that a portion of the Norfolk County layout of Page Street dated October twenty-second, eighteen seventy-two, a public way laying in Stoughton be altered for the purpose of discontinuing a portion of said layout in the area described as follows. Uh, the discontinuance area being shown as roadway area containing thirty-seven thousand, three hundred and sixteen square feet on a plan entitled plan showing the discontinuous proportion of October twenty-second, eighteen seventy-two Norfolk County layout of Page Street in Stoughton, Mass, between the Avon-Stoughton Town Line and the east of the sideline of the December fourth, nineteen fifty-six state highway layout of the Amets Memorial Highway State Highway Layout number four-five-one-zero and the east of the sideline of the May twenty-third, nineteen fifty-five state highway layout of Amets Memorial Highway State Highway Layout number four-three-four-eight, scale one inch plus thirty feet, dated February second, two thousand and twenty-two, prepared by Curly and Hanson surveyors and sealed by William P. South, PLS, and as more particularly described as follows. Uh, beginning at a point of commencement, being a stone monument with the drool located in the town of Avon on the northwest sideline of the June ninth, nineteen thirty-one county layout of Page Street, vents south seventy-five degrees, twenty-six minutes, fifty-three seconds west, a distance of a hundred and fourth feet, forty-two, a hundred four point four-two feet to the true point of beginning located at the intersection of the Avon-Stoughton Town Line in the northeast corner of the October twenty-second, eighteen seventy-two Norfolk County layout of Page Street in the town of Stoughton, then running north fifty-six degrees, thirty minutes, zero seconds west, a distance of six hundred eighty-nine point five-seven feet, then turning and running south nine degrees, twelve minutes, eleven seconds east, a distance of eighty-four point zero-six feet along Amets Memorial Highway, then turning and running south fifty-seven degrees, twenty-three minutes, twenty-four seconds east, a distance of five hundred and thirty-nine point six-four feet, then running south sixty-four degrees, thirty-five minutes, fifty-seven seconds east, a distance of a hundred point seven-one feet, then to a point on a non-tigetic curve to the left that is concave to the northwest, said curve being along the Avon-Stoughton Town Line and curve having a cord bearing of north twenty-three degrees, forty-six minutes, twenty-eight seconds east in a chord distance of thirty-nine point seven-seven feet in a radius of five thousand, six hundred and eighty-eight point four-zero feet, that's northeasterly thirty-nine point seven-seven feet along said curve, turning through a central angle of zero degrees, twenty-four minutes, two seconds to a point, said point being the point of beginning. Therefore, your petitioners pray that said way be altered by discontinuance within the limits as specified above, dated this, the twentieth day of February two thousand and twenty-two, by the town of Stoughton Select Board, Joseph McCrisky Chair, Deborah Roberts Vice Chair, Stephen Kaby, Scott Carrera, and Lou Geto. And along with the petition was a, 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 a letter from the board, select board, supporting the petition.
Thank you, Patrick. Before we open, before we allow the, uh, anyone who wants to speak on this, uh, petition, uh, I hope everyone in assembly uh, has made himself admitted with this, so we can hopefully, uh, go forward in the time we may. We've had this, uh, in this process, and we're ready at some point to go to the next level. And I'm going to also ask everyone that speaks to record their name for the record, the town on which you reside, and whether or not you are in Abada. So I see some folks here from the town and other places. I'm going to open it up. Uh, anyone on the Zoom will also be allowed to weigh in and speak on this petition. So if you're going to, uh, address the commissioners, I ask that you come up and explain, uh, why the dis, what you feel about the proposed discontinuance. So I'll open it. Chairman McCrisky, happy open.
The chairman, thank you. Commissioners, Peter Collins, Dixie, Chairman Shay, thank you on behalf of people of Stoughton for our positive relationship we've had. You all, as kind of commissioners, have stepped up to be a partner with us in the town of Stoughton on many issues, opera, and issues like this. Uh, I'll be yielding to Mark Tisdale, our assistant town manager and our engineer, to talk the workings of not in that world. But this is a great project, uh, this program that we've found property in town that has sat for years and was not able to be developed. So we tried to look at ways to get this property, turned it into tax dollars. Instead of putting money on the taxpayers, everything for the budget, we want to encourage business to come to Stoughton. This is a road that can handle traffic. This was on the, the, uh, the other side of Route twenty-four, but it is Stoughton property. The road handles the traffic. We've got newer businesses coming in. You've already got notification for another request that we made before your board, which will be the biggest land deal in the town of Stoughton in fifty years, with the potential to bring several millions of dollars of revenue to the town without taxing our schools, without taxing our public safety, which is the greatest thing that can ever happen to the taxpayers of the town of Stoughton, is we're making all that revenue available to the budget to take care of our schools, public safety, and so forth. So I would just ask that you would kindly consider supporting our request. And with that, again, I'd like to thank you each individually for the commitment that you have made to the town of Stoughton and you've become friends with us on, on this adventure to bring new revenue into the town and rely less on taxpayers and more on bringing revenue into the town. So with that, I ask that you respect my offer to, uh, to forward Mark Tisdale, our assistant town manager and town engineer. Thank you very much.
Mark.
Thank you, Joe. First off, thank you very much for welcoming us to your meeting. I'm Mark Tisdale, the assistant town manager of Stoughton. I've been dealing with your, your group for a few years now, ever since the offer funds came over, when I was the interim town manager at the time. Uh, you guys have been great to work with. I appreciate all your help and effort and everything. Uh, appreciate Director Collins' help. And I, and I'm an engineer by nature, born and bred engineer, so I really respect this gentleman. He's a very thorough, detailed surveyor, engineer type of guy, so, uh, without him, we couldn't get to where we are today. Um, I'm not a man of many words, so I'll kind of cut to the chase. This, this road is on the east side of Route twenty-four. It's Page Street. Um, it doesn't serve any kind of convenience or necessity for the town right now. We don't utilize the road. Um, the property owner, each side of the road is the same property owner. Uh, so it doesn't serve a benefit to us at all. Uh, it did, it didn't serve as access to an easement, which the, uh, if the applicant has proposed adequate access through that easement with the green area on top, so there's, there's adequate access through that easement now. By discontinuing the thirty-seven thousand square feet, it allows the property owner each side to actually develop a contiguous piece of property, uh, from an economic development standpoint. It's, it's a home run for Stoughton. Uh, and, uh, you know, that's pretty much all I've got to say. It's a huge, it's a huge benefit for the town now, this, this road discontinuance.
Anyone else present who wants to testify? Is there anyone on the Zoom who wants to testify in this matter on Page Street in Stoughton? We have, I see the consultant engineers here. Patrick.
Chairman Shay, I could just add for the record that, um, the, the butter, uh, T L Edwards is represented by, uh, attorney David Fernett. And, um, back in two thousand and twenty-two, they did, uh, submit a letter in support of the petition to discontinue, uh, the right of way, and they're in full support of the, the hearing.
And you, you have that letter?
I have the letter.
Okay.
Yes, I'm, I'm David Fernett, and I, I didn't think there was any need for me to add anymore to the, to the hearing. Uh, we, we want this for our client, obviously. And I don't think there's anything I can add to the representatives from the town of Stoughton.
Okay, thank you. Bill Self, he's the, he's the engineer, okay. Anyone else? Commissioners, any questions? Commissioner Stady.
I don't know who's the proper person to answer it, but again, through the chair. So you have highlighted, um, what part is being discontinued, no sweat. But the orange and the green, can you explain what those two boxes represent again? Sorry. Is the green, we're granting an additional, like a land swap or easement?
No. Uh, so the, the yellow highlight?
Yeah, I got that.
It's the full discontinuance area.
Got it.
Okay, so that's being discontinued. The butters, this, on, on each side is all T L Edwards.
Right.
Except for, uh, the Amets and then the, uh, Town Line. So, uh, we're, the orange highlighted area, uh, when you go out in the field, you actually see a clear to maintain, uh, a gauging gas transmission line or Enbridge.
Right.
Transmission line that then turns and goes under twenty-four to the other side.
Okay.
Um, given that that was a public right of way, they didn't need an easement. When the town discontinued this triangle of easement here, they reserved an assignable utility easement for AGT in the future, if needed. And the orange area highlighted here is a, the reservation of an assignable utility and, and, uh, right of way for AGT to maintain their, uh, transmission lines.
Okay, that's the one.
It'll be held by the town, and when AGT comes forward and says we need an easement, if, if they can assign it. And so then the butter due to the fact that this right of public right of way is no longer going to exist, and there's no access out to Avon, um, the butter, um, wanted giving a, a alternative and equivalent access to AGT to maintain their transmission line, and they're preserving an assignable, uh, fifty-foot right of way easement, uh, that's, uh, the top that touches the existing relocated Page Street. And this will be held by the town, and if AGT, uh, needs access to, um, to get in and out for future maintenance, this will be an easement that'll be reserved by the, and held by the town, that it can be granted to them. In addition to that, the butter has, uh, volunteered to build a gravel accessway with a, a locking barway, and they've already constructed it, which they put this around. Where they already built the barway so that the AGT doesn't have to do anything later. They, they, they have the same incumbent access to do, do maintenance in the future.
Okay.
So, and then the last, uh, signable out of the abundance of caution, the area that's within the yellow area is being, um, reserved and an assignable utility easement um, for any existing utilities that may be found later, uh, when they, if they, uh, redevelop the site. The right of way has been here since eighteen seventy-two. You know, there's not always records of every public utility or, or private utility that might run through a, a, a right of way. So just in, in, in the event that they run into something, we, we reserve the fact that, that the town can have, have, uh, reserved assignable easement for that as well. And in the language, um, the county council, uh, worked on, we made it flexible so that the, um, the, the butter has the ability to, uh, relocate the utilities at their own expense and the easement to make it so that the, uh, the site could be redeveloped fully and, and, and relocate any utilities as needed, uh, uh, to town specs. So.
I'm assuming, I'm, I'm assuming that
That's in worst case scenario.
All the attorneys and engineers work together when the, so the person knows those easements are still there. They reserve, the reserve easements are there on those things.
They don't exist until needed, unless.
Until needed.
Yeah, so I, I, I would imagine that this would be needed and possibly this in the future.
Yeah.
Um, the hope is that this one's not, but in, in the event it is, it's, it's reserved.
Okay, I got you. Thank you. I'm good. I'm good. All set. No further questions from you?
Just a couple.
All set.
Okay, I'm going to call for the final calls. Is there anyone present or on the Zoom that would like to comment on this matter in the town of Stoughton? Again, this being the public hearing required by law. Last call.
Who do you people guess?
Okay.
Engineers.
That's, that's the engineer, that's.
I see a none, Mr. Chairman. Motion to close the hearing?
Uh, yes, I'm going to thank everyone for.
You're good?
Oh, that comes. That's correct. You can't close. Very good point. It is further on, I know. Uh, last call for objections, or any comment. Commissioners, there are no objections, and, and the view of the property is not, not, not necessary.
Yeah.
And we can take a vote because there are no objections to close the vote.
Right. You want to take a motion to take it under advisement?
I'd rather close it today.
Yeah.
There's no objection. I feel comfortable.
Okay. I, I agree with you.
We really, and they explained, actually, what question they had, oh, you cleared that very well. You really did. And I honestly, I think this should, this thing was filed in February twenty-twenty-two. It's been over a year. Be nice to kind of get some closure for Stoughton.
Okay.
It's good.
The motion to close the public hearing.
I, I moved that.
Second.
Motion made in second to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
We don't vote yet until the following meeting or sometime, right?
The date for the adjudication of this matter will be, uh, at a, at a future meeting of this board. So a final decision can be made after the hearing is closed. The hearing is closed.
Okay. Likely early Jan.
Likely the?
Early January.
Early January, okay. This concludes the matter of a public hearing on Page Street in Stoughton. Thank you very much.
Good job, everybody.
Thank you, everyone.
All right, thank you. Mr. McCrisky, real quick.
Chairman. Just want to take this one last opportunity to thank you for the relationship we've had over the years helping us with projects like this. This is what county government should be doing, working with municipal government. We have a, a great developer that's working with the town as well. And, uh, at an appropriate time, I hope we can, uh, see what a groundbreaking.
Sounds great.
Happy holidays to you all.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming.
See you soon.
Take care, Patrick.
Take care.
Happy holidays.
Thanks, Joe.
If there's no objection, I'm going to go on back to the record, uh, reading the schedule. December twentieth meeting. Number fifteen, report of the county director.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, just a few quick items, um. There'll be no meeting next week. Uh, commissioners had previously indicated they would just take a week off, observe holidays. The next scheduled meeting will be January third, two thousand and twenty-four. Uh, as the commissioners and anyone else watching or listening understands, there was a, uh, an impactful storm yesterday that rolled through the area. High winds and rain, uh, impacted two specific properties. Uh, Stoughton District Court lost the flagpole. It has been destroyed, and our insurance agency, the agent was in today meeting with our procurement manager to pull works of the claims associated with that replacement. And also the Quincy District Court, um, had a roof leak, uh, that forced the closure of the second pool men's room. We were in touch, um, with members of the trial court who owned the building. They were in touch um with members of the trial court who owned the building. Uh to help coordinate uh not just the cleanup, which our folks did very, very well on. Um, but also what they choose to do going forward. I think they're gonna have a roofing company go out. To try to patch what appears to be a roof leak, but as you probably know, the roof on that building is well beyond useful life. Just trying to get past the next several months, next winter. Uh, so other than that, the county survived the storm, so to speak. Wanted to thank members of the facility maintenance staff who were out there cleaning up a lot of debris and handling uh this matter properly. It was much appreciated. Um. Hmm, that is all I have at this point. I wish all of you a very happy holiday. Wish you and your families a peaceful time.
Any questions to the county director?
Good work, good job.
Okay.
Great.
Sixteen, any emergency items on topics that you changed or not reasonably anticipated? We have none. I do have a note about. Of one of our employees. As we close today's meeting, I'd like you to think in your thoughts of Edward Jordan. Of Stoughton, Mass., who's the father of Mike Jordan in our engineering department. He recently passed away. So if you can remember, Mr. Jordan, we'd appreciate it. Before we adjourn, we'd like to wish everyone a happy holidays and a merry Christmas and a happy new year.
Yeah, yeah. Then so. On that note, I'll move we adjourn at uh one fifty?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we are adjourned. Thank you very much.
Good.